Confident and happy that the truck can make the turn. Maybe rather than something that would enable them to run over. Maybe we should do the flip side. Maybe we should put something there that would dissuade them from even thinking about it. Like planting a sizable evergreen right on the corner or something. Right on the border of the road in the four foot.
Thank you, Tim.
Swat the land, right adjacent to the road. So then, you know, a truck, first thing you'd have to do is knock down the tree.
I think we would have some visibility issues with the evergreen.
Well, they may, but I mean, at least it would.
There is a bylaw provision that prohibits.
Planting?
Planting as above a certain height on corner lots.
For visual, yeah, okay. Well, you could, all right, plant something that's four feet high that's stocky.
Well, I think that we have to remember.
I'll leave that to you guys, you guys don't.
I'm going to be working on the property in the near future with the new homeowner. I've met them, they moved in last night. I've been dealing with them for the past month and a half. They have a copy of my permit. I've been very outgoing, straight with these people. So they understand what's happening. And they're buying into Thea Nursery. And I'll meet with them to discuss any of their concerns on the corner.
Everybody's, every once in a while when I see people's mailbox is getting knocked down, some people come back with a granite post. Maybe just a nice little square granite post there.
Yeah, could do three.
It will look like a fancy mile marker from days gone by.
Sure.
Something that the truck's going to be like, ah, I can't go there.
In fact, I think we have to clarify whether it's that we can't put it into the town's right-of-way. So they could do, they could hard pack the right-of-way, but I don't think you can put a structure in the right-of-way. Now, they could put something on, so what I'm wondering here.
It is a scenic road.
It's a scenic road, but it's also a corner. And I, you know, maybe a low tree would be acceptable. I think one of the things that we might consider as a condition if we don't want the hard pack is requiring that any damage done by a truck be.
Fixed.
Fixed, exactly.
That's, that's, that seems to be what's been going on continuously, but it doesn't seem to be what people are happier with, though, so.
But I'm just worried if we're putting something in a corner.
Put a curb there, we'll put a curb there, put a high curb there.
No, we can't because we want to keep their budget.
Well, no, no, I just mean, I'm just talking six feet.
When Hillside Street gets repaid after this.
One circular piece and a six-foot, like the curb isn't going to cost an extreme amount of money.
Well, I wonder if we're going to ask the town engineer to look at the drainage anyway, which we should, if we should ask the town engineer for what the town might like to see within the right-of-way. Now, what they do on the property is another matter, and you could certainly do some sort of low shrub thing and then have dirt gravel and then the paving. I don't have any objection to that, I'm just concerned about the town right-of-way, that's all.
Well, that's where the problem seems to be, that's where you get ruts and stuff.
The problem is that there's four feet of grassy.
Right.
The area.
I understand that, I'm concerned about planting or putting structures in the town's right-of-way.
But the bottom line is, whether it's delivery to you guys or, like I can see there is other construction up there. Trucks are making these ruts. So my thought is if we can put something there that a truck driver can see visually, see, and be like, I ain't got to run over that, I'm going to pop a tire, I'm going to do this and do that, so I'm going to make my turn a little bit more careful and I'm not going to run it over.
Right. And I have no objection to doing that, I think it's a great idea, I just want to make sure that if it's the town's right-of-way, we talk to the town first about what they would accept in that right-of-way. Because if you remember in the discussion on Brush Hill Road, they didn't want to do the sidewalk and the curb because it was an interfere with the plows, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that before we impose conditions on the town's right-of-way for them to put in, that we've talked to the town, so that's all.
We'd have to suggest a condition, but I'm pretty sure the DPW director doesn't want the right-of-way obstructed.
Again, my little granite bound that looked like a post for a mailbox, then the plow would see that as well. Unless the snow was four feet.
Unless there was snow on it.
Unless it was five feet of snow or something, yeah.
You can't put your six-foot post up there.
You could put a fancy east-northwest thing on a weather van, I don't know.
Tim, could you get in contact with the town engineer and maybe ask him what he, if there are things that he would accept as a visual guide to please don't run over this area? And then obviously we'd have to talk about whatever that visual guide is, if it's damaged, then there's a replacement provision in there.
Street sign.
What is it?
Street sign.
Well, the street sign right to that corner, yeah?
And one of the problems is there is a neighbor who does, who lives right there and he does park in the intersection intentionally to slow traffic down, which we as neighbors appreciate, but when he does park there, then it does cause problems for all deliveries. So it would be helpful if he maybe doesn't park there, but.
He's parked on Hillside.
He's parked on Hillside, right at the end of Forests.
But to compensate by hard packing Forest Street, it seems to me that maybe a no parking sign would, or something along those lines.
Street sign's a good idea.
Speaking of signs, next thing on the list is just the location, description of the signs advertising the business. Obviously, the sign review committee and the selectmen approve the signs, it's just to note that we have them on our application.
It's going to be probably one of the first things under your new bylaw that happens. This is going to be quite exciting.
Except, I hate to burst your bubble, they're existing signs, so they won't fall under the new bylaw because they're already existing. However, should they ever change the signs, they would fall under the new bylaw, so.
Is there any intention to change, just the sign you have there now?
It's just letting us know where they are, so. All right, why don't we jump back to hours then? Since Tim has provided us with the schedule, Tim, do you want to walk us through it?
This, the schedule, the first set of columns is the proposals for the hours for the landscape business. And it's broken down by sales hours, holiday sales hours, the hours where loading and use of noisy equipment is allowed, delivery hours, and dumpster management hours. I have a note that the hours in the proposal, and they would be under section 4F operations, in all cases match the zoning bylaw, except in the case I was referring to earlier about the sort of extra hour in the morning for noisy equipment. The next set of columns is the nursery business hours that sort of are referenced in the application. And those are in there because I think there was an effort, and Ned or Maggie or Josh can speak to this, to match up the nursery loud-noisy equipment hours with the landscaping equipment hours for, obviously for enforcement purposes, just so that there's minimal confusion as to sort of what's going on when. The less we wade into the nursery issue, the better, so we'll move on. There are two other landscaping businesses here that I was able to dig up. Colter Landscaping is governed by, I believe, is it a special permit or a site plan approval?
Special permit from the planning board.
Special permit from the planning board, so these are the analogous hours that came out of that. And then Eagle Farms, I believe, is governed by a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. So there's less continuity, but basically I tried to match up sales, holiday landscaping business, noisy equipment in a sort of a way that made sense. So you can sort of do as apples to apples a comparison as you can, I think.
And then the next page you're just showing.
The next page is just a little visualization of those hours. The dash lines on the edges sort of indicate the times allowed by the zoning bylaw, and this really is just, the only thing you should be focusing on is the little bits that are outside those dashes, which it's up to the discretion of the board whether or not they want to allow that.
So that's the Monday, Friday loading noisy equipment and the Saturday loading and noisy equipment. Okay.
So are we, is this application looking to start at seven?
So the application has requested the 7:00 AM start for Monday to Friday and the 8:00 AM start for Saturday.
So that includes noisy equipment and everything at seven o'clock?
Yeah, for the loading noisy equipment. The rest, as Tim said, the rest all match up with the zoning, but it's that hour of discretion where the zoning actually requires the later start, but gives us the discretion to allow the earlier start if we feel that it is justified by the business operations.
And you actually might want to make that edit on that first column, because I'm noticing that it says 8:00 AM, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM Saturday. I mean, what the application is asking for is.
It's a seven and the 8:00 AM, yeah.
And Saturday, is it nine or is it?
It would be 8:00 AM on Saturday.
Looking for the hour on Saturday, too. That's, I think we were talking before about maybe loading the night before or something, huh?
I think, let's see, the issue of hours is as critical as any component of this. This is a seasonal business that operates when it can, for as long as it can. The ability to start at seven is almost make or break, it really, it really needs to be there. To the extent that, you know, if they're returning at six, if the returning, if the equipment is returning to the yard before six, then they'll maximize the use of that time to offload and reload before they turn everything off at six. There's a hard line of six o'clock, everything's off, unless I suppose they come back after six, in which case they drive into the yard, park the trucks, and go home. But it's critical to be able to load and go early in the morning. They have to get to the job sites, they have to spend the amount of time there as much as they can and go. And if it's, you know, if they're back at five, then they load for the next day, then they get in, turn on the trucks, and leave. But if they don't get in until after six, they can't unload until the following morning and then need to reload, unload and then load for the next, for that day's job, they need the ability to work within that timeframe. That extra hour is a critical component. And, you know, just like fencing is a critical component in terms of the abatement of the noise, this is a critical component to the successful operation of the combined businesses. And I think that, you know, the town's general bylaw with respect to the commencement of construction, the commencement of other activities is generally allowed to start at seven, and this business ought not to be singled out with respect to that.
Comments, questions?
Somebody can start my work in construction outside my house at seven, but I don't expect them to be there the next 10 years, every day.
They might move down the street and around the corner.
I don't expect them to be there consistently.
Alex, any comments?
I think that the hours just reinforce the importance of the fence for all this activity, noisy activity that is going to be going on. That's why, I think the fence is very important. And I think that, I think the fence is going to work. That's my, my view. But I can't guarantee it's going to work, but I think it's going to work.
And I would expect that we would want to hear from members of the public on the hours of operation as well, so.
Does your matrix here, Tim, does that tell me that the other business you show on here does start at eight?
That's, that's what the, the special permit governing their operations says.
For Colter, yeah.
Now, what about the landscapers up at Copeland?
I don't have any, any information on those.
There are four landscapers up there.
We don't have special, we have not granted special permits for them. In fact, I don't know that the ZBA has granted special permits. They have, okay.
Well, it's granted a permit to Copeland.
To Copeland, right.
To allow landscaping to operate as, among the tenancies. They have a range of tenants that operate from there. There are several landscapers who operate from there, and that was part of the most recent update to the special permit. Guess we did that three years ago, two or three years ago.
So, Tim, if you can find that one, that'd be good. And then you looked up Thomas', and that is so old that you.
More luck on that one.
Right, okay.
So our concern with the seven o'clock start time is there is an accepted, start time of seven, if you call the Milton Police, it's an accepted start time. So it's just frustrating from our end that a landscaper who is out of town actually can come and go to your house at 7:00 AM, so that they can be at your doorstep at 7:00 AM to start your landscaping project. But we are here in town and we can't start until eight.
Because you're.
I don't, I don't know that's the case, I think it's, you could stop, you could be at my house, my house at seven, but you have to, you can't start loading up trucks at seven. You have to have everything loaded, get the guys to show up, pop your cars, get in their truck, and head over to my house. It's the noise that's created at seven, I think that's the problem, not the fact that guys are getting out of their car, getting into a truck, and heading to a site.
Because I know that, like as you know, Hillside's been closed for the past few weeks off and on for the new water main, and I do know that the guys are showing up at 6:15.
To get out of there.
To start the water project, it's because they're housing all their equipment right across from my house. And I totally understand it, I'm up at that hour, the school bus comes at 7:00 AM to get my kids, so pretty much everybody's out of the house and everyday normal life by 7:00 AM. So I think the accepted start time in town is 7:00 AM, and I, we just want fair and equal treatment from everyone else in town and also any other contractor showing up to do work at your, at your house.
So we'll have a look at the Colter special permit, Tim will pull that, and we'll also, obviously, I'm sure, hear comments tonight on that.
Yeah, and I think my point is all, is, is, there's a different situation here as far as, in my mind anyways, even one of the businesses up on Randolph Ave, I mean, they're in an area that's already, you know, generating noise and this and that and whatever. If you say a gas station on East Milton Square opens at seven, if you say the 7-Eleven, no, the convenience store wants to open at seven, it's like, it's just, you know, where you're planted in this very residential neighborhood, it's just, it's a little bit more unique.
And if you talk to some of the other neighbors at the end of Hillside Street who abut Copeland, they can hear trucks starting at six or 6:15. So we just want the equal treatment as our competitors, because the season is so short, we just want the same treatment as our competitors in town.
Like Alex said a minute ago, it seems like noise is one of the paramount issues, so it's, you don't want to come back.
No, we don't want to come back.
If things should come into place, we don't want you to come back. You know, behavior to try to minimize the noise. Try to load up the night before or something like that.
Think about, could be, I mean, just throwing this out there, if we do the fence and we agree on a fence, then we can start at seven.
It would help.
All right, so I want to do one more thing that has sort of been hanging out there before we move on to the public comment, and that's firewood. I think of the issues we haven't discussed, that's the biggest that we haven't touched on. So we've had a proposal from the applicants to put the matting in the truck, it's coming in, it's being unloaded in this three-sided barn, we're worried about.
The truck comes in between nine and three, I think.
Nine to two.
And, you know, I'm not sure the truck gets loaded at seven o'clock with firewood. But I, I'm not sure it gets loaded with firewood at seven o'clock.
Which truck gets loaded?
The dump truck.
The Thayer truck.
The Thayer truck. I think that the, the big truck should show up after nine, after the kids are off the streets and before they get home, nine to three.
Nine to two is actually what's in the zoning.
Nine to two.
And in the proposal.
That's fine.
Okay.
And then, you know, not, not, fine, go out and landscape, but you don't need to load up wood trucks first thing in the morning.
So we'd have a different loading time schedule for the firewood?
I think so, but, I mean, the wood operation is not really a landscaping operation, it's something that your dad prized, I mean, he did a nice job with it, and it certainly is a, a nice operation. A nice operation in that it sells a lot of firewood, and, you know, it's good stuff. But it does seem to me it's not an integral part of either a nursery or a landscaping business, but I do understand that it's a moneymaker, and what we're doing here is going to cost them some dough. And they have, you know, they're going to put mats into the, into the beds of the trucks to, when the bobcats come and load them up, to prevent that big clang. I'm, I'm prepared to authorize the wood operation.
What hours would you suggest for loading their dump trucks?
Why can't, why can't that be, I can't, I can't see why it would be that critical, the hour of the day you load the truck, maybe explain to me otherwise, but, and I'm not sure.
As far as noise, I think is what Alex is suggesting.
Which is the more egregious noise, the, the big truck that comes in to dump it, or when you guys load it with bobcats into your dump truck? I don't know.
They're two different kinds of noise.
Yeah, but I mean.
I mean, they're both noise that the fence will mitigate.
Well, hopefully, yeah. But it would seem to me maybe both, could you do both nine to two, have the delivery nine to two, and have you loading up to take it out to different locations nine to two?
No.
No.
Why?
Not enough hours in the day with traffic and everything else.
And we accommodate homeowners' hours that they're home and sometimes they're not home until after two, they're at work, so that doesn't work.
Is most of your wood delivery after the landscape business kind of winds down?
Correct.
So your dump trucks are either landscaping, delivering wood, or piling snow?
Or delivering plant material.
But that's again with the landscaping business, right?
Well, that could be nursery.
Yeah, so from what I'm hearing is if you're going to be limiting our landscaping hours and our firewood hours, we just want assurances that our nursery hours are not being limited either.
We're not, we've already.
We're not doing nursery, landscaping only.
You have to recognize that if there's a ton of noise coming out of the site, and you say, well, it's all nursery noise, that when we come to review it and the neighbors say, we can't tell what kind of noise, noise is noise, and it's really noisy over there, your defense that it's all nursery noise may fall on deaf ears.
No, and that's what we're trying to prevent.
All right. I'm simply saying that, that the, saying that we can do nursery noise and not have a problem, I don't think that that's the way it will work out.
No, and we are trying to be as accommodating as possible, but when you're restricting one aspect of your business, then naturally you're going to try to accommodate the loss of income from that one aspect with another revenue stream. And our other revenue stream is our nursery sales. So we just want assurances that if you as a homeowner comes in at 9:00 AM to pick up soil or a plant, that I'll be able to load you with a bobcat at 9:00 AM. It's a strict nursery sale.
The only, yeah, the only thing that's governing nursery hours under this permit is the Sunday loading where nursery is allowed 10 to 3, but landscaping is not allowed at all on Sunday. That's the only nursery restriction in this, so.
So I thought that was just for lands, our landscaping hours for nursery use was for Sundays, 10 to 3.
10 to 3, use, loading and use of noisy equipment for the nursery. So that's what's in the, what's in the zoning. All right, so we're going to move on to public comment at this point. Ned, Josh, Maggie, if you'll sit back, thank you very much. All right, so I'm going to run through the regular rules for public testimony. You're going to wait to be recognized by me before speaking. Come to the table and please give your name and address and speak into the microphone, that's for the cameras to pick up, obviously, speak loudly enough so that people can hear you. When you are done, please leave the table. All questions or comments must be directed to the chair. Speakers may not cross-examine the applicant, board members, or other speakers. I will ask the applicant to respond to questions at the end of the public input session so that everybody will have their questions answered at once. I would also like to say that at our last meeting, there was some, some comments that were, seemed to be going on that were personal among people in the neighborhood. I understand that there is a difference of opinion among people in the neighborhood and that there seems to be some frustration. I would remind everybody that this is a government meeting, I expect everybody to be civil. If you have frustrations with each other as neighbors, I expect all of you to leave those frustrations outside of this meeting. We are looking for comments focused on the landscape business and not the nursery. We are expecting constructive comments on the impacts that we expect to see from the introduction of this landscape business under the special permit and the potential mitigation of those impacts. If you're here just simply to give statements in support of the application or the applicant, please keep those relatively brief, and we are looking forward to hearing from all of you. I had said at the beginning, one thing, I had said at the beginning of the last meeting that I would recognize Dr. Dunn first, so I will do so, and then we'll recognize people. We're hoping to hear from people that we haven't heard from first, first, and then we'll hear from people that we have heard from in the past. Alex?
We have had a number of written communications come into the board, and I think that we should describe what they are and make them part of the record.
Yes, absolutely. We have had emails over the week, those have been forwarded to, all the ones that you've received have been forwarded to the planning board members. Those become part of the public record and will be printed out and added as part of the file. If anybody has printed comments that they wish to give to us tonight, please give them to Tim, and they will also be added to the public record. Thank you for that reminder.
And Tim, I would like a hard copy of the material.
Is there, is there any limitation on individual speaker's time? And I only ask that relative to the fact of getting more people the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, that's a good point. I was hoping that we would be wrapping up this up around nine o'clock as far as speaking, so it is 24 minutes past eight now. There are a lot of you, I'm assuming many of you are here to speak, so please be cognizant of your time and respect the time of others. Dr. Dunn, please come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Good evening. Tonight, I would like to offer my thoughts on the word legacy, and then specifically address the legacy of Thea Nursery in the Oldfield family. The Merriam-Webster dictionary defines legacy as something that happened in the past or that comes from someone in the past. The legacy of Thea Nursery began when Bob Oldfield, after receiving a bachelor's degree in agriculture and animal husbandry from the University of Maine, returned to his hometown of Milton and purchased a small farm on Forest Street from Roger Thea. He married Margaret O'Connor, who had received her bachelor's and master's degrees in education from the then Boston State Teachers College. The legacy had begun. Marge and Bob's first child, Amy, was born with severe brain damage that occurred at the time of her birth. Shortly afterward, Joshua, also known as Josh, and Margaret, named after her mother Margaret, also known as Maggie, were born, followed by Hannah and Bobby. In his early years, Bob worked two jobs in order to support his family. The care for Amy required full-time attention from one of her parents or siblings. Everyone who knew the family always remarked how kind Amy's siblings were to her. A treatment used at that time for her conditions such as Amy's was known as patterning. This consisted of a series of exercises designed to improve the, quote, "neurologic organization" of a child's neurologic impairments. It required that these exercises be performed for many hours during every day by several people who had learned the technique. It was easy to find the volunteers who would assist the family in performing the many hours of patterning, the neighbors, both those closely nearby as well as those from other parts of town, some on a daily basis enthusiastically and with love rendered the patterning treatment. I suspect that this helped, this help given to Amy by the neighbors was a motivating factor for the Oldfield family legacy to help their neighbors and others in the town of Milton when the need presented. Such an attribute continues to this day. At a very early age, George and Maggie began to work on the farm/nursery. At a very early age, George and Maggie began to work on the farm/nursery. It was hard work from early morning to late in the evening when they were not in the classrooms of the Milton Public School System. But then again, the legacy of the entire Oldfield family knows only hard work. After graduation from Milton High School, Josh followed in the footsteps of his dad and obtained his bachelor's degree in landscape horticulture from the University of Maine. And Maggie obtained her bachelor's degree in business administration from St. Michael's College in Vermont. Certainly two well-educated individuals to be in the nursery and landscaping business. The Oldfield family legacy continued. And with the death of their dad at the young age of 67, Josh and Maggie assumed the leadership of Thayer Nursery. And at the same time, they were developing the legacy for their next generation. As the process for the application of Thayer Nursery for the landscaping component appears to be coming to a conclusion, I respectfully ask the board to permit this legacy to continue. Yes, guidelines/regulations should come with the granting of this permit. Unannounced visits by the building inspector should be made to guarantee that the regulations are followed. If not, appropriate penalties should be instituted. However, the regulations should be reasonable and consistent with those granted to other similar business endeavors in the town as well as to the Milton Department of Public Works itself. There should not be a double standard. My wife, Carol, and I are not related in any way to the Oldfields. And we were disgusted when one of the opponents to granting the permit, when at the time the cost of a very expensive certain type of fence was being discussed, stated they did not, quote.
Dr. Dunn, please, no comments on, comments from other people. Just focus on your own.
Okay. Did not care how much it costs the Thayer Nursery, then that's.
That's fine.
They did not care how much it cost Thayer Nursery. That is what the person wanted. The regulations must be realistic. The financial resources of Josh and Maggie are not limitless. After listening to the repeated testimony of the three opponents for well over two years, there is no question in my mind and the minds of the 99% who favor granting the permit that the goal.
Dr. Dunn, again, please don't refer to others.
The end goal is to make it financially impossible for the Oldfields to continue, thus forcing them to close their business and end the Oldfield family legacy. Thayer Nursery is a valuable piece of real estate which would be easily sold to a developer for construction of multiple condominiums, apartments, or other ventures. The Oldfields already have had inquiries about such a possibility, so much for the nice farm-like horse country neighborhood with minimum traffic flow. The Oldfields have already made several concessions as they realize that life itself is a compromise. To this board tonight, I plead, do not allow the legacy of the Oldfield family to be broken. To do this would be comparable to breaking the legacy of George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, Bobby Orr, Larry Bird, or Ted Williams. The town of Milton needs Thayer Nursery and that landscaping. The town of Milton needs their children. The town of Milton needs the legacy of this outstanding family to continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Who would like to speak next? Again, we're looking for people who have not had a chance to speak before. I think you've spoken once or twice, but I don't see another hand yet, so please come forward.
My name is Christine. I'm a direct butter. And I wanted to, could I just use this for one quick second?
Take the mic with you if you do.
These, the trees that, I'm in this back corner here.
Right.
The trees that are back here, I've actually seen them put in before. Those are stock and they're sold. So the last time they were there, they were all, it was balled, you know, partially through the summer. So that's not a permanent solution. The trees that Josh took a picture of, I invite any members of the board to come over and see which, they're not even 50% alive. And if they worked, I wouldn't be here. I have. You people have better things to do. I have better things to do. They don't work. I think a combination of the fence that's being discussed and some bobcat noise softeners that I sent to the board is worth a good try. But I just want peace for the neighborhood. And I'll read a relevant piece and then I'll go on my way. I want to thank the board, first of all, the members of the board for their time and effort in this matter. Secondly, I'd also like to acknowledge that the kind words and support of the non-abutting neighbors, customers, and friends of Thayer. I can speak firsthand of the quality of Thayer's landscaping, Christmas trees, and firewood. But the reason I'm here in front of you is to simply ask for your help in solving a noise issue that has plagued my family and other direct abutters for over 20 years. I moved my family here in '92, and when we moved here, we could neither hear, see, or smell Thayer. But shortly after the town dump was closed in the mid-'90s, Thayer's landscaping business began to expand. Many trees came down to expand the yard. A huge metal warehouse went up. And loud bobcats from a large-scale commercial landscaping business and all that it comes with became a way of life for us. In 2002, the abutters, some different, asked for the town's help with the noise, dust, and smell. And the board, A Board ruled in favor of the abutters, set guidelines, rules, and hours of operation. Unfortunately, those rules were neither followed nor enforced. And here we are again with an even larger operation. So please, let's get this right. I ask of the board, please find a permanent, quantifiable, and enforceable solution for us and for future direct abutters. Thank you for your time, and please, please help bring normalcy and peace back to an otherwise wonderful neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, I saw your hand go up.
So my husband and I live on Hillside Street, close to Thayer Nursery. This is a letter from my husband. Unfortunately, he's away on business today, so I'm going to read his letter.
And your name?
His name is Oliver Williams, and mine is Vanise Williams. So this is regarding Thayer Nursery in Hillside. To whom it may concern, I understand the board is looking for views from the neighborhood regarding Thayer Nursery in ongoing activities. I would be there in person, but my employment has me out of town for this hearing. My family and I live at 308 Hillside Street, which is two doors down from the primary entrance of the nursery. We moved here in August of 2013. Unequivocally, the primary attraction for my family to the neighborhood was the agricultural field created in particularly by the nursery and those that own horses. These elements combined with the nearby reserve make Hillside a special and a unique place. Although we don't know the owners well, they have been extremely welcoming to new families through hosting various HNA activities like Christmas caroling and the summer picnic. These events, in my experience, are special and provide a rare opportunity for neighbors to meet neighbors and create the building blocks necessary for a sense of community between the residents on Hillside. I grew up on a family farm in Western New York in the '70s. It is no longer in business because it failed to adapt and evolve with the changing times. Appreciating that the business climate is always competitive, I support the Thayer family resolve to evolve the family business to remain viable, relevant, and profitable. As a neighborhood and town, we need to remain flexible and supportive so that the few families in agriculture in the area can continue to prosper. In closing, thank you for your service to the town. Thank you for dedicating this time to this important opportunity for the Hillside community. I ask you to support Thayer Nursery. Sincerely, Oliver Williams and family.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Hello. Yes, we're the Quinn family. We're at 22 Parkwood Drive. We're just one street over. Cindy and I moved there in 1998, and we've been there, reared a nice family ever since. And nearly 17 years we have lived in the neighborhood and really enjoy the neighborhood, the way they make up the neighborhood and what it brings to a family life. The riding stables and Thayer Nursery are a big part of the neighborhood. Our house is one street away from, across the street from abutters on the property.
What property between us and Thayer Nursery? So we're fairly close.
We've never had a problem with any noise of operations or trucks or lightning or lighting or pawing or anything else from the nursery whatsoever. We met Maggie and Josh as neighbors, and we came to the neighborhood first. We know them as nothing but good, hard-working people doing their best to grow a family business. As Cindy and I have a small business, I'm a broadcaster. We've been operating for the last 25 years, and we know what it is to work hard and toil long hours in the family business. We would like to see the town of Milton stand firm on the rules and regulations for all the similar businesses in the neighborhood. And that's counting the other two businesses, Stones Throwaway from Thayer Nursery, Al Thomas, and Eagle Farms as well. Please, no double standards. And I'd second everything that Dr. Dunn had to say about the legacy of the Oldfield family. And hopefully, the same rules and regulations will apply to everybody, even the D W M.
I just wanted to add, when you were talking about the hard pack and the entry to Forest Street, I walk all around there and Forest Street quite often. And that's the land that is next to Thayer Nursery is basically the only safe place on that street. Because even in front of people's beautiful houses further up the street, if you have to get off the road, you're in poison ivy and thorns. So, you know, when you were mentioning, what would you do if a truck came? It doesn't matter. Whenever more than one car is on that street, you're in poison ivy. So the Thayer Nursery land is the safest, and they keep it as nice as possible.
One other point is the hours of operations are key. We know as a small business, if you don't open at a certain hour, it's very hard to make up for that lost business. You have to toil and work harder throughout the day and create another line of business for that lost business. And I admire how they have operated their business over the last 17 years that we have known them.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am, and then you after.
Good evening, Miss Chairperson. Carla Mori, Precinct 11. I'm not an abutter, and I certainly respect those that are. But I would like to say from the perspective of, yes, Josh and Maggie have done wonderful work on our property and very respectful people to do business with. But I'm also involved with a group in town that does a lot of civic engagements with the town, improvements, maintenance on different places. And we've had to go before conservation and different boards of some of the projects. And many times, I understand there aren't big budgets. Budgets aren't large. And we've been asked to go to, oh, check out the businesses in town, ask Thayer Nursery, ask Eagle Farm, ask A A Thomas if they'll do this pro bono. And every time I've asked, they have always said yes to me. So they, they're not only, I find, to be good business people, they're good people. And I truly believe in this legacy. My organization started in 1924. And the basis of that organization is to be civically involved. And if it came down to the fact where they had to shutter their business, it would be a huge loss. So I guess what I'm asking is that you, I believe they've certainly bent over backwards. I think they have endured some personal hardships. I believe that they are doing all they can, and they don't have endless pockets. And at some point, everyone has to give something. And so I guess what I'm saying is I just feel that maybe the other side needs to do also a little bit of soul-searching and understand that this is a viable business. And that's all I have to say. That's very important to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. There's one, yes, ma'am, you in the second row.
I've spoken before, so I don't want to take somebody else's.
You're fine. There were no other hands up when you put yours up, so.
Hello, my name's Carol Stocker. I live at 291 Hillside Street, across the street from Thayer Nursery. And I have done that for 35 years. And my house was very close to the road, and it is very close to Thayer Nursery. It's closer to Thayer Nursery than almost any of the abutters that complain. And I do not have a problem with noise from Thayer Nursery, but I do have a problem with noise because the neighborhood in the 35 years that I've lived there has changed a great deal. Thayer Nursery is part of, much closer to the 200-year-old agrarian roots than all the new houses and also the road. Now, the neighborhood is much noisier than it used to be. And when you're talking about how can you tell nursery noise from landscaping noise, there's also a lot of ambient noise. And the big source of noise for me is traffic. It is cars using us as a cut-through for commuting at 6:30 in the morning, and they are barreling down that road. And when you, when I hear this debate about should Thayer be allowed to open at 7:00 or 8:00, I'm thinking of all the times we've tried to get some sign that says, "Don't cut through this neighborhood at certain hours." And on top of that, as far as noise goes, the town, we have spent, and the Hillside Neighborhood Association, which I have been a past president of, a huge amount of effort trying to tell the town, "Don't keep trying to pave and widen the road to make it faster." That is the main source of noise for the true neighborhood other than this one or two abutters who are complaining.
Again, please do not mention other people. Focus on your own comments.
But this is a point that I don't know if it's relevant, but it feels relevant to me when you talk about the noise that I'm subjected to. It's the ambient noise of traffic. It's not the noise of Thayer Nursery. And I do hope in this big water main and gas main project, which seems particularly ill-timed for Thayer Nursery, given that they have this narrow window for planting, and that is when there are town signs all up saying that streets to them are closed. And I have talked to the Public Works about this. And they say, oh, we've gone back and forth about whether they say you can go down the street or not, and they don't always say that. After this big Public Works project, and which has contributed to the noise along with all the clear-cutting and additional building from new houses, which is constantly threatening the quality of this neighborhood that 200-year-old farm is helping to preserve in Thayer Nursery. It's a case where there's just a lot of noise going on that has nothing to do with Thayer Nursery. And I hope when this Public Works project is through, and I'm very grateful to the town, that they don't try to pave and widen the road some more because they're always looking for an opportunity to do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does anybody else wish to speak? I saw you in the front, ma'am, and then I saw the gentleman in the back, so please come forward.
Hello, I'm Bridget Wildbaum from 94 Parkwood Drive. I have two very quick questions and one very. I have two very quick questions and one very quick comment. One was, at the beginning, you were talking about the mechanics of who's going to be voting on this and how many votes are needed. I think I misheard. I thought you had said that four out of five votes are needed in order to pass this special permit. However, if, I thought I only heard four names of people that were going to be voting. So, I was wondering whether there are four people voting or five, and, so you can clear that up, please.
I will clear that up, yes.
Thank you. And I also was interested in knowing this special permit, who in particular is this permit being granted to? For example, I believe wholeheartedly in the work that Josh and Maggie are doing. And so, when I'm speaking about wanting to help them continue, I am particularly wanting to help Josh and Maggie and the Oldfields. I want to know whether that particular special permit could then be transferred to someone else if someone else were to come in and purchase the property. And my third very quick comment is, I urge you all to accept, to pass this special permit with all the restrictions that need to be in place, fence, et cetera, quantification measurements. I look forward to hearing that you've passed this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I will answer those two questions right now, and then we'll move on to the next comment. So, the special permit does, in fact, require four positive votes from the board in order to pass. There are only four members of the board who are eligible to vote. And then, the second question, the special permit, if granted, would be granted to Maggie and Josh Oldfield and Thayer Nursery, as they are the applicants. Sir, you wish to speak? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, and thank you, madam Chairperson, for allowing me to speak. My name is Andrew Cahill. I live at 325 Hillside Street. I don't think it's any secret that small business drives the world's economy. What really distinguishes our country from the world, having worked around the world for 35 years and lived around the world for 35 years, is our economy and the United States' ability to enable people to compete and get an environment for competition, because competition is what drives the American economy. And I think what's happening here is that all businesses need to change because of competition. That competition favors us as the consumer. And what's happening here is the Oldfields, they're trying to change Thayer Nursery to be able to compete. So, as a neighbor, it's very important for me to make sure they compete in a reasonable way. Having heard their plans and discussed their plans on several occasions, I think they have reasonable plans and plans that will enable them to compete and plans that I support 100%. So, that's number one. Number two, there's a couple things I think we need to be wary of. Anytime businesses try to change to compete. And the first thing is, businesses, you could be smothered by the process. And the smaller the business, the easier it is to smother a business with the process. We need to be very cognizant of that. The second thing is, and this isn't pointing any fingers, it's an observation around the world, is to, a vocal minority cannot slow or stifle the process. The process must be driven by all the folks and their input. So, I'm in full support. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? Yes, sir, I see you in the back. And then I saw another person in the back corner.
Hi, I'm Scott Swanson. I live on Hillside Street. Neighbors, not direct neighbors, but close by. We've been there for about seven years, and I would say that one of the reasons we came to the neighborhood is Thayer Nursery. It's a very unique place, and I think it should be respected for that. And in listening to this discussion tonight, you know, the details are what matters in terms of how you do this. And I think if the cost is too high to pull this off, then it's tantamount to a death sentence for them. So, you've got to keep that in mind. You can't make it too expensive. And if the fence is the key, then maybe the neighbors should pay for the fence. I'm not sure why it's all on their.
Focus on them.
Why is it something Oldfields have to put up? It goes both ways. So, I think you have to be creative if you want to facilitate this. And I would hope the board, you know, wants to facilitate a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, yes.
Hi, Scott Johnson, 11 Hillside Street, Milton. So, I sit here and I listen about traffic. I listen about competition, and I also listen about being competitive in the marketplace. And one thing I want to say, I'm totally in favor, if you're going to compete in a business, I own a business, you have to be comparable to your competitors. There's only so many hours in the day you can make a profit. And in the case of labor, in the heat of the summer, you've got a lot of immigrant labor in this business, too. These are people that work very hard off the sweat of their brow and their backs all day long. You have to look at the fairness to them and making them work in the heat of the day as opposed to the early hours in the morning. And I think that 7:00 AM is traditionally, in America, across the board, an industry standard when labor starts work. And if all your competitors in the landscaping business or the nursery business are starting at 7:00 AM, and farming is traditionally even an earlier start than that, it's only fair to them that you allow them to have the 7:00 AM start time. There's just no way around it, in my opinion, if they're going to remain competitive in the marketplace. Traffic, I live at the end of the street. It is, the main traffic problem, I think Carol's 100% right, is the morning traffic is horrendous coming down Hillside Street. And I thought we should, you can't put a sign at the end of the street saying, one way, do not enter between 6:00 and 9:00 AM, because that's DCR land, and I guess they won't allow that. However, you could put a sign that says, do not enter between 6:00 and 4:00 AM and 9:00 AM, right at Forest Street. And after two weeks of people having to take that dog leg and directing the traffic around Forest Street, you could also put at the end of Harland and Uncle E Road, you could put another one. And you could put one at the end of Forest Street that says, do not enter. If you did that after about two weeks of people realizing, and you'd have to have the police probably be there in the beginning to make sure they knew it was going to be enforced, people would stop taking that cut-through because it's the same cars every day. I see them sometimes blocked, backed up, often eight, 10 cars at the light at Hillside Street in the morning, idling out there. And that traffic is unbelievable. And look at when you try to come down 28 South in the afternoon. It's unbelievable. The traffic is backed up sometimes all the way to Tedeschi. So, that does create noise, and that is an issue. I don't have a problem personally with repaving Hillside Street. I think it's bad for the suspension of your car. I think what you have to do is figure out a way, it doesn't stop these people from coming down the street and causing a tremendous amount of noise in the neighborhood. And then, I want to talk about compromise, which I think is what's probably most desperately needed in this situation. And what I've seen is tremendous compromise and expense on the part of the Oldfields. And it's, I've watched the, well, we don't like this, we like that, we like this, we like that. And they move, and then the target moves a little bit more, and it's gone on. It's taken tremendous amount of time out of the lives of the board and citizens. But I think that compromise is really what has to happen here from a level of reasonableness. And I think that they've done a tremendous amount of compromise. They've done a tremendous amount of learning. They've done a tremendous amount of listening. And they've involved engineers in sound attenuation to find out what the sound attenuation is and how effective these fences are and whether the noise is going to go right over the fence and not make any difference. And frankly, I pretty much think the fences, you know, it's kind of, I think it's futile. But that's my personal opinion to it, after looking and reading and seeing what the reports say. So, I'm in full favor of a 7:00 AM start and the permit being granted for the Oldfields without a fence is fine with me. Thank you very much. And thanks for all your time, everybody. I know you guys have been ad-noising on this.
Does anybody else wish to speak? We're coming up, I saw your hand.
Someone in the back?
No, I saw Mr. Joe Henning's hand. Was that you raising your hand?
He can go.
Okay, all right. Then, Mr. Rowe, you are recognized.
John Rowe, 23 Parkwood Drive. I would like to comment on several of the items that Ned went over at the beginning of the meeting. The first one, snow plowing. He talked about it was difficult to determine a 2012 baseline. If you can't determine a baseline, then I don't believe you should allow snow plowing in the permit. As far as lighting, I'm not sure why or how an industrial floodlight, the kind that they have in Walmart parking lots, what business that has in a residential neighborhood and why it's even needed. I believe if you look at the amendment, the bylaw amendment, it talks about all lighting must be facing down. And I think the purpose of the amendment was to allow for street lighting or perhaps lamps along a driveway, not to have the entire property lit up by floodlights. I would like to see the floodlights removed. As far as hours of operation, the special permit that Thayer held from the ZBA limits the start time to 8:00 in the morning, Monday through Friday. And it limits the start time to 9:00 on Saturday and Sunday. As far as I know, I mean, I don't know if that's still in effect or not, if this permit supersedes the ZBA permit or not, but those are the hours of operation. And I believe those are the hours of operation for the other landscapers who have a permit by the ZBA. In addition to that, the fruit center is also not allowed to have deliveries, any motorized deliveries, before 8:00 AM. And so, for consistency, I believe the start time, if the permit's granted, should be no earlier than 8:00 AM on Monday through Friday and no earlier than 9:00 AM on Saturdays. As far as firewood is concerned, several hearings ago, I played a video that is on Thayer Nursery's Facebook page, and it shows a delivery of the wood from an 18-wheel tractor-trailer truck. And it is not, it's quite noisy. It creates a great deal of pollution. But that's just one aspect of the wood business. The other aspect is the volume of wood that is trucked out of Thayer Nursery for delivery, off-site delivery. These are in dump trucks, diesel dump trucks. And the majority of, probably, I think they, the 2012 baseline was 1,000 cords of wood are delivered. The majority of that wood is delivered on the weekend. And, you know, in the wintertime, you're at home in your home. We hear this dump truck's getting loaded, revving, in and out of that property, starting 8:00 in the morning on Saturday, all day, all day, back and forth, back and forth. And the same with Sunday. This is a high-impact industrial use that I believe should be off-site. There's no reason why they can't make money on 1,000 cords of wood a year by renting a facility in an industrial area. Then, lastly, I'd like to talk about the plan.
Yes, again, take the mic with you if you want to point to it.
Can the engineer show me where the gas line is?
Is he still here?
Yes.
There's, sorry, there's no gas on the property? Okay, thank you for that.
I called the gas company, and they told me there's service at 270 Hillside Street. And I think it's important that the gas line be on the.
Here we have an engineer.
I wanted to know where the gas line was. You know, I'd like to see the gas line.
While he's looking for that, yeah.
And my comment is, they say there is no gas, but the gas company says they're delivering gas to the property.
Hold on, hang on. I'm sorry, what was that?
The gas line goes from the street to the 270.
To the house.
To the house.
On 270, okay.
Part of the property.
And I, and, oh, wait, wait. Right up the driveway. No, I see that here. There's the water. Actually, we didn't find any record of the gas to this house.
Well, the gas company says they're delivering gas to that house.
Okay, no cross-examination. So, you want to know where the gas line is. You've heard that the gas company does deliver. You're not showing it, so we'll just need that clarified at a later date.
Okay, like I said, we looked at the maps, and we couldn't find any gates.
Okay. All right, continue, please.
A while ago, my engineer, and I think, were you with my?
Again, no, stop. All questions directed to me. I will give the, get the answers as.
My engineer did a site walk of Thayer Nursery, and I believe it was with this gentleman. Can you ask him if he was present?
Just finish your comments, and then I'll give the whole answer at once.
It became clear that all of the water from the property drains into the ditch that they dug behind my home. And I guess the plan here is to put a 12-inch, to dig the ditch deeper and to put a 12-inch pipe, and so that the overflow will run over to Hillside Street. How is that going to work? I guess I'd like somebody to explain to me, are there going to be pumps? Is there going to be, you know, a concrete cistern that the water's going to be in? And when it gets to a certain level, it starts to pump into the town's drainage system? And also, I have a question on what is a 100-year storm? It's quite common now that we get rainstorms with five, seven inches of rain in two or three days. Is that a 100-year storm? I'd like a definition of.